Call the meeting order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, um, the agenda has Ryan gets first, but I'd like to deviate from that and invite Rachel Bauer to start. Because this could go on for a while and we just want to be respectful of your time too. So yeah. If you're ready, we'll just put you on the spot right away.
Rachel Xander, Bauer is my maiden name.
Sorry, did I say Rachel Bauer?
So this is Sarah, but he's the president of the United Way and my boss.
Nice to meet you.
Alright, so we have our presentation.
Few years ago, we really started Launchpad here at Woodley County for one purpose. Uh, we knew that childcare wasn't working, uh, nearly effectively not as an entity to in Woodley County. There weren't enough providers, those providers didn't have enough slots, and we're really wrestling with issues of affordability for everyday parents. We came in to try and address some of that, we'll see, I won't read the slides to you, it makes for a long afternoon. But that was really our mission is how can we begin to organize local childcare providers to help them work more effectively? And how can we build a system that could change over the next few years to really improve that? Uh, to give you a little sense of the need and what we're talking about here in Woodley County. Uh, under the age of five, just under 2,500 kids, uh, parents, kids with all parents in the workforce. That's kind of a blanket term we use for whether you're single parent, two parents, blended, uh, that all parents in the workforce. Uh, and then what's our capacity with 16 organizations locally, how many slots do we have for kids? Just under 900 or as you can see, over 1,700 kids. Uh, we grew that a little last year in that capacity of 81 slots. Primarily, I think that was a work with public schools. We'll talk more about that as we get into it, but you'll see when we talk about children in need of care every day, whose parents go to the workforce and they need something, uh, just over a thousand kids locally who are in need of care and can't find it through anywhere with its license. Challenges, slide doesn't show up. A couple of things that we talked about is, uh, one, parents finding care. Uh, it's one thing to have the slots, but parents also need to find it in a place that's convenient for them, that is here where they live or work, how they locate that. Uh, two, afforded care, uh, the average cost of childcare, uh, if you go anywhere from if you have four-year-olds who are just prior to going to kindergarten, that can be in the realm of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty dollars a week. Uh, if you're talking about infant care, it can get up in the 220 to 250 dollars a week, uh, for indoor care with that. At the same time, our providers are having real challenges. One, workforce, in a town where everybody's looking for workers, uh, they're not used from that. Uh, trying to find good workers who can come in to take care of our children every day to make sure they're cared for and nurtured, uh, is tougher and tougher. Uh, we have places that have rooms that could be opened, uh, if they could find workers to work with them. It's a real workforce issue that we're facing with that. Uh, the fourth would be, uh, regulations. We find many of our providers, uh, who are really well-meaning intentions for our state government that have put an awful lot of regulations upon our childcare folks. And really having them struggle with how do we deal with this? How do we do that, uh, significant cost around every employee who comes in and maintain the environment? And then really uneven regulations across types of childcare, uh, whether you're a center or ministry or a home, uh, those can really change between where you're going. So there aren't some real consistency for that from there, so it really puts a, a lot of encumbrance on the childcare providers.
I was just gonna say that, you know, with those, with the cost of care, that's per child. And it averages about 180 in Woodley County, these are like across Indiana median numbers. Um, and then as far as the workforce, you know, our providers can only pay that much because if they pay their staff more than that, then they have to pass costs on to the parents and parents just can't afford it already. So they're really having trouble attracting the routine quality staff.
Some things that we've come into doing, and we'll just kind of look through the next slide, is providing, uh, provider support. Uh, one is we've put, uh, more trainings in place to help meet with some of the regulations, uh, whether that's around, uh, example, we did one on Pacha's Discipline, which talked about how to handle kids who are having disruptive behaviors in the center, that are taking more staff to handle different kids. Uh, we've also helped in terms of grant writing and regulation navigation. Uh, one of the things we have is some regional folks who provide services and provide help, but without a strong entry point to our community who's really working to help them pay attention to Woodley County, it's easy for that time to get those work into Allen County and different places. Uh, so Rachel does a great job of really working with some of our, uh, regional folks to come in and say, okay, let's coach you. Let's find if your kitchen isn't suited for what you need to do, let's talk, well, what improvements do we have to do? Okay, if you're out of ratio, let's, let's figure out what that means. Uh, so it's really become, uh, having Rachel know how to do some of the specific coaching herself, but bringing in other folks who really can coordinate a fairly fragmented system from the state of who knows what, to really have kind of a, an advocate who's standing, uh, right there with them.
Yeah, there's a large enough work of state supports, um, but they're also constantly changing whoever the representative, representative is. And some of the agencies cover multiple, um, aspects of, you know, one, um, one support. So like, a lot of what I'm trying to do too is going in and meeting with providers and making sure that they, um, that they can get on the food program so that they can be reimbursed for anyone who would qualify as low-income or getting on childcare vouchers so that they could be reimbursed for anyone who's low-income. And so making sure that they're utilizing all of these supports so that they can bring in as much revenue as possible before we even start to look outside pulling grants in and fundraising.
I think, I don't know, I think in that way, I'm really trying to make sure we're maximizing all the resources that are in there. It's really what we've been about the first two years. Uh, in the other words, we found that so many of our providers were really, um, really islands in and of themselves. They had not, uh, connected with enough other providers to find out what was the state of things, how were things working? If they were facing similar challenges, how could they work together on some of those? It really operated in some ways as a lot of real independent small businesses. When Rachel started conducting, uh, site visits with every place so that we could see what the actual, all of the places look like in the community. So we had a feel for what we discovered, there's wonderful providers who are here, but who were serving a small number of children, so they weren't necessarily known to the community. So how do we bring them all together? That led to a peer networking call that happens every month now, talking about, hey, these regulations are changing, it has branches available. These things are coming up, how do we ensure that we're well positioned, uh, to go through all of these steps? And then we've done now two years ago, we just did our second one last Thursday, uh, that's been some provider recognition event. Uh, it's really a structured event where we say thank you to those providers. We're often overlooked for all the things that they're trying to do and to really make some time for them to feel appreciated by the community as they're taking care of all of our children every day. The other piece is really regional engagement. You're gonna start hearing, uh, from us and then from others, a growing group out of Northeast Indiana who's really looking at how do we change, uh, the system around childcare in Indiana? And this is a group of like 11 counties that are across Northeast Indiana, uh, that are maybe do some public policy work and some advocacy work to say, how do we? My comment all the time is that Indiana does not have a childcare system. They have a set of childcare policies that they have bunched together and policies. And if we take a long 10-year view at that, how do we begin to really put that into a system that makes sense? Uh, one of the examples, we said, hey, what do you mean by that? We have a big six categories of different child cares that are here depending on how many kids you serve or how you serve them or what you're doing. When we look at some of the most successful states in childcare, that number is about two to three different types of childcare. So we fragment that and make extra regulations and extra steps. So how do we begin some of that public policy work? The second step to that is the regional coalition has started doing some childcare data studies, uh, to help us understand what are the needs we have for parents who are out there? What, what's happening, what does it actually look like? So we didn't back that up as we move forward. Uh, and then has work groups that are helping on everything from policy to parent engagement to what does that future look like? So we try to be a strong representative of that, so Woodley County is an active part of what's happening in the future with that.
And we would like to share some of the, uh, the study information with you at the end. Uh, so some of the work that I have been doing heavily over the past year is working with both school systems. They have opened childcare for their employees. Actually, WICO has even moved past and become licensed and they're open to the public now for community seats. Um, so WICO is running out of the WICO Career Academy, they have their childcare center out there. Um, they were able to get licensed, I believe they may be the very first school in Indiana to become licensed. And, um, they just opened up three new rooms and a kitchen ed, it was renovation that they've been working on since the end of last summer. And, um, so that they are, can build even more seats because we have no open seats in the county, everyone has waiting lists. And they also were able to integrate their director's salary into the school system. And then Woodley County Consolidated started from infant parent for their employees' children, it's being ran out of Mary Rayburg. They, they're just completing their first year. So, um, that's been pretty exciting and I've worked with Monica Ralston, the principal at Mary Rayburg. We were able to receive a $500,000 grant from the state to expand. Uh, we were looking at potentially buying a location and renovating it so that they could open up even more seats and become licensed for the community. Um, and we're still trying to figure out where that location's gonna be. So, that's been, that's been interesting work, but like Darren had said before, we've built 81 seats in the past year, which we have like, you know, a thousand to go, but we're getting there slowly, so.
I thought to break it off without, without, as we go. As looking ahead, two pieces we're gonna just, uh, kind of lay out for you about what's coming. Uh, one is, uh, an interesting aspect, we've talked about growing capacity and how do we do this differently? A new model is merged with our partners, Early Child Alliance out of Fort Wayne, and it's around shared services. Uh, what we continue to find with most child cares is often the people who work there go into it because they love children and they really want to be a part of their lives, not necessarily that they love paperwork and administration, not like us, right? We enjoy that tremendously. Uh, so we began to find ways, uh, working with shared services model that you can share, uh, what you're doing in terms of payroll, uh, in terms of what you're doing for invoicing parents, which the number of child cares we're holding on that was significant. Uh, childcare management system, so you have a better tracking system for who's showing up and who's there every day and doing that electronically. Uh, the food program that Rachel talked about, getting qualified through different grants, doing that as a part of the shared services model. Uh, we have now places in Fort Wayne who have been doing this for a couple of years, some places in Casayasco we're doing, and we're now looking into how we can bring that some of our providers here in Woodley County to say, hey, some of that administrative burden is significant, let's get into this, it's a fairly cost-effective model and it really helps efficiency. So we really are bullish on where that's gonna take us the next couple of years of helping. The folks are doing good work, maybe free up a little time to do more of that work and less of it on paperwork and administration. And then, I'm sorry, I just gotta walk through that, that was some of the things we see, some efficiency. One of the things that the regional coalition did first too was begin to look at, uh, data and say, what's been, what does childcare have as an effect on employees, uh, some of their decisions? Uh, and you'll see that in our chart, 79% reported they had made a critical employment decision due to childcare issues. And that is everything from leaving a job, uh, to move, changing shifts, to looking for an outside job, to finding a new job because they couldn't do this, uh, or they declined a promotion because it would be a change in what they were able to do, uh, and how they were able to provide for their children. So when we've gotten some people who wanted a little bit of it saying that childcare is an economic development issue. Uh, and this really is when we talk about the employment being scarce. And so our folks are really talking about this, the numbers we've seen in the study across Northeast Indiana, uh, of folks who would be in the workforce right now, but aren't because they don't have adequate childcare is significant. And some of them are very skilled people who have run the numbers and it's better to stay home or they have to stay home because there isn't a, a provider there, how do folks feel? Uh, one of the things that Rachel is doing, and we're doing more of, is now, uh, talking directly to some of our businesses and some business engagement. One, we have a couple of survey tools that now, if they say, hey, I think this is an issue with my employees, but I'm not sure. Because one of the things we've uncovered as we've gone through this is employees don't always tell work when they're having childcare problems. As they said, they're met and asked with not necessarily the most receptive behavior from that. So sometimes they are shielded with that, uh, so that when they're having trouble. We have some surveys and tools that starts to start to say, hey, let's talk to folks and do some honest surveys, do some things to find out, do you really have a challenge? And then if so, one of the things we've learned, a couple of years through this, both here and in Warsaw, is there's no cookie cutter to fix that. Uh, usually our discussion starts with somebody, rather come up and say, hey, we've got some issues, we think we want to build a childcare. And Rachel, I almost immediately know that isn't what you want to do, that it's very, very cumbersome. When we start to talk about, let's, let's figure out what that solution is for you. Uh, is that maybe partnering with whatever existing child cares and saying, hey, can we help you, uh, reserve some slots there? Do some cost sharing with your employees that are a part of that. Uh, we're having some of those discussions in Woodley County Schools, talks about some of that expansion, like we'd be able to fill some of that in, to build some community childcare who has a support coming in from the schools. Uh, trying to figure out where are the different ideas because it's the cost to a business to develop their own childcare is significant. Uh, and troublesome because we find parents make a lot of choice, have a lot of factors that come into why they choose childcare. Uh, and that's always a direct relationship, we have 50 employees who need childcare, they'll all choose us. Maybe, but they might also choose somewhere that's closer to where they live or closer where grandma can pick them up. Or a lot of different factors. So really trying to work with some of our folks to say, hey, let's help us, A, understand your need, and then B, let's talk with what we're doing across the community, maybe find solutions there. Just because I know you probably asked, we came in and said, what's happening in other counties? Uh, we have seen, uh, a significant amount of activity in the last year, uh, with this. Athens and Wells, uh, investing to help support their joint coalition, uh, over the next three years. Uh, LaGrange is doing, uh, some of the same work there. Uh, Noble County investing what we call a tri-share model, which is a pilot talking about can we share costs between, uh, government and business and parents? And split that cost is based off a program in Michigan that is coming and getting some lights here. Uh, Noble County has really stepped in front of doing all those pilots for that program. And then in Casayasco, uh, put about a hundred thousand dollars into shared services, just talking about. So there is real movement in this around other kind of question. I guess two pieces I close, one, not asking for funding today, but I can promise that it won't, it won't be coming back sometime as we go along. Wanted to make this really a point to say, we'd love to be more a part of the discussion as we talk about this. And we talk about economic development, we talk about premium jobs, we talk about housing, uh, for workers. Childcare becomes an important, uh, influence and really can come in and say, hey, what's your community like? The head of Lobash Economic Development is a great story, when he went to take the job, he was a single dad and came in and he spent the first two weeks after he, he accepted the initial offer, looking for childcare for his two boys. Couldn't find it, and he told them he might have to adopt, he'd have to decline the job because he was a sickle dad and couldn't do it. This led off to a spur in Lobash County of them doing a lot of different things around childcare. Uh, it's an economic issue, we'd love to have a few more part of the public discussion. Working with that, we've got good relation with the Chamber, we had some discussion around that, Laura McCarren has been terrific with schools and child histories and profile. We'd love to have that continue to be a part of our discussion, if you all see, how is this affected and matters to our community? Uh, the second is we'll come to it, and I said to Rachel, what's the most important thing we leave for them? And she said, you know, we've been able to raise quality, we've been able to grow the number of seats, but one, we haven't managed to budget before built. Uh, and what childcare costs, long-term, that's where something is going to have to structurally change. Our people are going to continue to struggle with childcare. It doesn't take long, we could talk in this room and people are gonna tell you, it's very expensive. And usually at the point of your career where you're, you're trying to afford that, you're in your twenties where it's, it's a lot tougher. At some point, the, we want to bring you a better model for how to do that, but we want to talk about there's gonna have to be more public investment. Indiana ranks, you know, bottom six states in the nation in terms of investment in early childhood. Uh, this is states we don't want to be a part of, but the Arkansas's and the Alabama's of the world, we would rather not be on that list, that's where we fall. And far ahead of some of the states who are really doing some exciting work that's happening. So, that's just a little bit for us to talk about how we're working on a situation we think is really important across the county. Uh, that we've made some improvements, we think there's a lot more that we can do yet, but we want to start building bridge here that we can have some of those discussions. If you come back in three months or six months and say, hey, some things have started to move, can we come back and tell you what we're doing right now? Hope that's any questions to you on that.
Did you have something else?
Well, just, I mean, these children are our future workforce in Woodley County. Um, and we have parents, we have work-willing parents who aren't finding jobs because they can't find childcare. So, you know, it really is an economic issue. Um, so part of our regional work, it was a study by Thomas K. Miller Associates that we had kind of just briefly mentioned, and it was about tri-share and running actual numbers to see what the gains would be if we were to utilize some kind of a program like that. So I'd like to share it as an overview of the numbers with you guys that you can look at on your own time. And then we would love to come back and actually dive into some really boring slides to share with you about what, what the gains would be for our county. So, um, yeah, so I'll leave these with you guys till it's over.
Okay.
Yeah, did you have any questions, Tom?
No, I, I apologize, none of us were available when you gave the presentation at the Community Foundation. And so that's why I've reached out and asked if he could just come to a meeting, I'm so grateful that you were able to do that.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Anytime, I mean, if he finds an employer who's, who's running the issues.
Great, I'm sure you're partnering also with Dale Duke and Economic Corporation as he runs across this issue as well.
Yeah, and we're starting, we're sending surveys to employers so that they can pass that survey on to their employees. You know, now that we have a really good, um, pulse in Woodley County with the providers, now we can start to build that network with businesses to, um, to see what kind of solutions.
Yep, okay, well, thank you very much. Great to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, now we'll go back to Ryan for our 2023 annual report.
Good afternoon. Please, I don't know if you guys have had the chance to look at the report?
Yes.
Okay. Basically for everybody here and online, um, each year the highway department is required to file a, uh, the annual report showing all of our finances, um, money in, money out, and obviously there's, cumulative bridge is a big one, that's through property taxes, um, but there's, everything's detailed here. Do you have any questions for me on it? Does anyone have any questions?
Okay.
Very complete.
So I do need a motion to, um, approve the annual report.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, opposed, the same, that passes unanimously, and I'll pass this round for signature. And while we're signing, do you want to talk a little bit about community crossings, matching grant, what that, what that grant is? And the application process, and I know some big news for the county?
Absolutely, in January, um, had the opportunity to apply for Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund for 2024. Um, it was a pretty in-depth application, our contact with NDOT was extremely helpful in answering all my questions. I would send him the draft, he would point out anything that needed changed, he'd send it back, that happened a few times, but, um, got to file relatively quickly. And this year they put a, normally it's a max of $1 million for matching funds that the state will give to the counties. Uh, this year they upped that to 1.5 million. And, uh, we applied for and received just over 1.3 million dollars. And that'll be for milling and resurfacing with new asphalt of Lincoln Way from US 30 all the way to the Casayasco County line.
So we really appreciate the work you've put into the grant application and we're, we're grateful for the grant. Um, one of the things now that I, as chairman, need to do is, uh, I received the, the acceptance letter and I have something I need to sign off on, on DocuSign, um, which is a standard form of accepting the grant. Um, but I don't do those unless we've discussed openly in a meeting and, and we all agree and, and go have an ask for a motion to accept that. I don't have the exact number, 1.32. And we can find it really quick just for everyone's benefit, it's 1.32. So the exact number is 1,322,662.50. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to allow Commissioner Banks to sign that document, the acceptance of the grant.
Second.
Okay, we motion in a second, any further discussion? And now I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, opposed, the same, that passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Um, the next item on the agenda today is, um, board appointments. So we have an open seat for the Regional Sewer District, the Woodley County Regional Sewer District, and for the Peabody Public Library Board, um, have, uh, documents that I wanted, um, envy to, we, the, the copy that you sent to us, uh, this stamp, it was a PDF, it was stamped by another county, and I just wanted to make sure that would suffice for our sewer district's appointment.
Yes, great.
So, I've been in discussion with Joel Frank, um, for a full year now about the Peabody Public Library and, um, had multiple conversations with Joel throughout the year. I've encouraged him to reach out to both of you and I know that he has. And so, um, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Joel Frank to the Peabody Public Library Board, um, with the term beginning on the 18th of May, 2024. And that term would go through the 17th day of April, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, opposed, the same, that passes unanimously.
Need a motion for the?
Yes, yep.
I move to appoint Elizabeth Wallace to the Regional Sewer District. Uh, I don't have the dates of that appointment, do you?
It's a vacant seat, so it'd be effective immediately.
Okay.
So. Nope, that's okay, so I have a motion in a second, I'll open it up for discussion. So the term on that is April 16th, 2024, and the term would end on April 15th, 2028. I will, um, open up for further discussion. And then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, opposed, the same, that passes unanimously. The, uh, form for the library board appointment only calls for the signature of the chairman. And we'll be heading there, but. Go out the room later, because that will be filed and sent to the library as well. I'll give that to you. Um, the next item on the agenda today is plat approval, Stephen Dilger from Planning and Building.
Good afternoon. Have a short stack of minor plants for your consideration, um, which should have gotten in your packets already. Any preference which one we start with? This one's in my hand. So the first one will be motive addition. Uh, what this is, is a one-lot plant located on 750 East, uh, about 800 feet north of 33 up in Smith Township. Uh, they are splitting off this one lot from an overall larger tract. Uh, there were a couple of things that need to be tackled to address some planning commission comments, uh, dealing with drainage with the adjacent property owner, and it's my understanding that they've done that, worked with Brad to, uh, get his opinion and so on. So, um, if there's some additional things that'll, uh, still need to have, and I won't sign it until everything's finished, but, um, the mileage here for your, I review and approval. Uh, they are dedicating a 30-foot wide ride of play along 750.
So you, you mentioned a possible drainage issue, and if Brad sees a bit of long drainage towards agenda two?
Right, um, it's not dealing with the legal drain, it's basically dealing with a natural. Right, it's not dealing with the legal drain, it's basically dealing with a natural swale. It's actually more of a highway issue than anything, because the highway actually, and I don't mean to throw Ryan under the bus if he's giving me clares. But, okay.
You're safe, say whatever you want.
But the highway kind of backs up a little bit there, it's been built up over the years, so it's something that happens. And so that was part of the discussion, how much is it just a thing that happens versus something that's caused by the pond? That's been put on this property by a different property owner, it's not the current property owner that student splits. So multiple different things here, and it's my understanding, it's either been resolved or it's really getting close to being resolved.
Any questions for Ethan?
I move to approve the request, Mr. Jennings.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve most addition as presented. Any further discussion? And now I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. And opposed the same, that passes unanimously. I have Grayson next.
I don't have Grayson. I don't think we have the malar, yeah. I have a watering hole that you guys got it. So this one is a three lot flat located on South Washington Road, not too far north of the South County line. You'll notice it's three lots, did not require rezoning because the parent tract is actually made up of two different parcels. So each parcel is allowed to platted lot before trading, I need for rezoning, in case, in case you wondered about that. Pretty standard, otherwise, there was some discussion, again, drainage was a bit of an issue here. Because as you look at it, lot three, which is up in front, would be draining across lot two. So they are working on addressing that appropriately. It's, it's a sheet blow, and they're planning on a shared driveway along the southern strip anyway, it's all family members. So it wasn't really going to be a practical issue, just a long-term. Legal issue, I guess, paperwork issue, so. Any questions on that one?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question, I thought that for the sake of recording things, we didn't, we tried to not use the word.
Uh, the was taken off, it's just water.
So it's just watering hole, so the language the is still listed.
Yes. Thank you for that, what you guys get is as submitted, the primary, and so if there's changes, those are made to the milar. But thank you for bringing that up.
Yep.
I move to approve watering hole as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve watering hole. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same, that passes unanimously. And then I have Grayson.
Yes, that is the last one I've got. And this one is a replat of several lots up at the corner of Preston Avenue, Fish actually road and Colony. Kind of tucked in there. The. There's actually no net gain in lots, it's just re-comparing old platted lots, for example, the platted lot, that's where lot two is on the plant. On the proposed plant was, I believe, thirty feet wide, and the others just were. Miss shapen according to what was actually built over the last eighty or ninety, hundred years. So because of what the owner wants to do with the property, to sell off a couple pieces. I believe they want to build a new house on there as well. They reorganized everything to meet our code, so it actually is zoning compliant now. Of course, there's some legal non-conforming setbacks as well, but overall. Winds up cleaning up this area in terms of survey work and winds up making more compliant with the zoning code.
I make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve green and train addition. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same, that passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll leave these here for you guys to sign at your leisure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda today is the safe streets for all ordinance, is. Is it Brian Lee?
He is probably gone, I can just kind of give a quick overview of it. It was kind of brought to our attention at a meeting that any or, or any fund that we set up needs to have an ordinance. And I know this is something he's been working on for a while, and we've been receiving the funds. So we presented a couple ordinances for Andy's review for this and another one that's following as well for Paula. So just kind of cleaning up, making sure we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah. And has everybody had a chance to review this ordinance? Andy, would you mind just really quick, talking a little bit about the passage of ordinances?
Yes, so whenever you pass an ordinance, generally it requires two readings. However, in most circumstances, you can waive the second reading. In a fiscal body doing a budget cannot waive. The second reading, you have to have two readings, and then there's a second one, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's very obscure, not applicable. Other than that, you can always waive, but you have to have unanimous consent. So anytime you pass an ordinance, you can say, we're, you know, passing this ordinance, and we're going to agree to waive a second. And then as long as you have unanimous consent, you're fine. If you ever had a meeting where there was an ordinance and only two of you were here, then you would have to introduce it in one meeting and pass it in second. And therefore, you all three should agree to waive this.
Tiffany, do you have an ordinance number for us?
Yes. They're going to be ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero four. Do you need any language in the motion stating that we're waiving the second reading?
Yes, you should say that.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero four and waiving the second hearing. Essentially, all this ordinance is doing is allowing us to set up a bank account to accept some grant funds. So it's really underwhelming, so. It's necessary to have two readings.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash zero four. And to waive the second reading. Any further discussion? And now I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. And opposed the same, that passes unanimously. And next up, we have the problem solving fund ordinance. Would love to hear about it, Paula.
Okay, I'm sure you would. So we were notified we were eligible to apply for a up to ten thousand dollar grant for operational cost that can be used for personal problem solving court. So the only problem solving court we currently have is veterans treatment court, and we are awarded nine thousand dollars, so that's what you have.
That's great.
And it is a renewable health grant, so we will ask.
So this will be obviously ordinance number two thousand twenty-four zero five.
Make the motion, giving ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five, establishing the problem solving court grant fund. And waiving the second reading again, this is just allowing us to open a bank account to accept those straight funds.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And opposed the same, that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. While we're signing, the next item on the agenda is Rosemary Brown with the updated bulk image fee ordinance.
In two thousand seventeen, the state changed our fee base so that we can charge. Companies who want to purchase just the image of all of our documents. At that time, they set the fee base at between ten and twenty cents per image. And when we did our evaluations, we determined at that time that thirteen cents would do. Our software company charged us three cents, so we were getting ten cents per image. Since then, most of the counties have already changed their fee, and our software company is now charging us two cents more to do this image for us automatically. So instead of coming for you again and asking, the counties that, that contract with our software company, all of them have raised it to twenty cents. So for this ordinance, I've raised it to the twenty cents, which is a limit. So that we won't have to come back again and redo it. At this time, I only have one company, and we make between two fifty and four hundred dollars a month on these, depending on how many documents we have coming. So, you know, it's just a matter of protocol to make sure that our ordinance is passed, so we can reset fee.
Okay, any questions for?
Just out of curiosity, I know obviously it's public records, but what do they purchase these for?
Have you looked at Zolo? A lot of things are going there, and according to law, we do not refuse them. The title companies are building large plants, we have in our. Information that they are not allowed to sell them, and our images that I send from here are watermarks. So they do say Willie County, I know there are some companies who can remove that watermark. But some of the states have tried to take these companies to court, and it's just costs too much money at this time. You can't win, so. All we can do is watermark them, sell them, and the most of them are going to large title companies.
I just wondered. Andy, have you looked at the agreement?
I have. Yeah, I've got a few comments, and it's been incorporated.
So what we have then is a bulk user agreement and an ordinance, which obviously will be two thousand twenty-four dash zero six. So we would need to do the ordinance first, and then the bulk user agreement.
I move to approve. Twenty twenty-four dash zero six, waive the second reading.
Second.
And if you would, can you read the name of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the Willie County Board of Commissioners, establishing the manner and form in which the recorder may provide bulk form copies to a bulk user.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. And opposed the same, that passes unanimously. And to follow that up, we also have the whole.
I'll make a motion for the.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the whole user agreement. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same, that passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosemary.
Looks like it's just me. Okay, next item on the agenda is the two thousand twenty-five holiday schedule. All have to review it, we've also taken that to our department head meeting and sought out feedback. Looks like we have a holiday schedule that's acceptable by all, so. I would just entertain a motion to approve.
Someone?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second to approve our two thousand twenty-five holiday schedule, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed the same, that passes unanimously. We have had many discussions about our meeting time. And as most recall, rolling into two thousand twenty-four. We felt that it would be a good idea to, to try a later meeting time and see how that worked out. And, and to tell you the truth, since changing that time, I've only heard negative. I've only heard from people who would rather our meeting time be one o'clock versus four o'clock current meeting time. I apologize, I didn't talk to you about this. It's just, it just continues to come up. And, and I knew that, I knew that one o'clock had worked for your schedule previously, and we checked with you before changing. So four o'clock, at that time, you had another meeting on Monday nights, would one o'clock work?
Yeah, still, in fact, it was still on my calendar, one o'clock. I went in today, showed up, and my guy's not right.
So. Rob, do you want to chat about that too, do you want to just?
I think we had received some feedback that, that people thought. The one P M meeting was inconvenient, but what we've learned is that. There's really no perfect time, and so we kind of have to compromise. We tried moving it to a later time, and, and like Commissioner Banks said, that the feedback we've received is hundred percent negative, that, that it wasn't better. And so I think the desire to move it back to the one P M time that, that worked for many years previously to this trial period.
Yeah, and if, if done in this meeting, there should be enough time then to post the new meeting time. Since we have three weeks between now and next meeting, it seems like it would be a good time to do it, it would be natural, of course, so. So do you have anything you'd like to say?
Oh, no, I mean, I agree, our. Participation's been lower since we've moved into Thor, and I mean, the idea was, you know, we catch people after work, and it's like this odd time at six, where you go home and come back. And then people work third shift, they get to sleep, and then come in, and I think it was wishful thinking, so I would agree that we move back to the one P M.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion then to change our meeting time to one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hands. And opposed the same, that passes unanimously.
It's the first and third Monday, right?
Yeah, now, don't get confused. Perfect. The next addition to the agenda is, we've had a lot of discussion, we've heard from many. Candidates in our current election process and, and constituents. And I know that it's been brought to me multiple times about signage at the courthouse. And so I know that you've received it, you've received it. So I thought we'd just first open up some conversation here about, you know, what we're hearing and, and what we're, we're working toward.
So in years past, I mean, that's how it's always operated, I guess we just never put anything. On paper that the candidate or a representative of the candidate needs to be there with the sign, grading people, how many leave you take the sign with you. The purpose of that is so the courthouse doesn't start looking like a trash can, it's the county's most precious piece of real estate. And as commissioners, one of our tasks that we're charged with is looking over all county property. I don't want the courthouse lawn looking like. Garbage, so. I think it's appropriate to ask candidates to take their sign with them when they leave, or when a representative is there for them, that they take the sign with them.
Anything I had?
No, I think that's always been the standard, and it's appropriate to, I guess, put in writing.
So my position is, you know, I'm, obviously, I'm a big fan of the political process. I'm a fan of elections. I think they're very important. I want max, maximum participation in elections. My concern is twofold. One, we still have yard maintenance going on at the courthouse lawn. And I've heard from candidates who place signs that they'd be willing then to remove their sign when the scheduled lawn maintenance took place. But it doesn't really work that way. We don't know from one day to the next, this time of year. A lot of times, they're doing multiple mowings at the courthouse lawn throughout the week, and it's not necessarily at a scheduled date or time. And in addition to that, I would hate for the optics or appearance that the county, the county government, or ultimately county commissioners are endorsing a candidate. So my thought is, it's either all or nothing. And I've heard from you both with your concerns, and I'm inclined to agree that we take a lot of pride in our courthouse. We've always taken a lot of pride in the image of our courthouse. And so, you know, I don't, I don't wish to have a lot of, I don't wish to have every candidate's sign in our yard because it just doesn't, it's not a good look. And so I brought this up to Andy. And there's been other conversations. And Jessica, I'm glad you're here, and I don't want to put you or Cindy on the spot, but you've been involved in the conversation as well. And so I would welcome any addition or input. But Jessica, you reached out to the two co-directors of the Election Division and asked about some of the rules. And it was, it left a question, I felt. And so I asked Andy to take a look at what they had sent. I forwarded your email to Andy. And Andy, if you want to kind of kick in.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that you have the ability to prohibit signs on county-owned property. I mean, the statute says if you allow it. So obviously, it's contemplating that you have a choice whether or not you allow it. It's very common that I found in other counties that they do not allow it. It's a pretty common practice. And so, I mean, we just talked about this a couple hours ago. So I took a shot at the resolution, which says that no political signs is allowed on any county government property unless the candidate accompanies the signage, with the exception of the government building, in which on Election Day signage is allowed. But in no event can signs be within 50 feet of the polling place because that's state law. So that's what that resolution says. It does say the candidate has to be there. It doesn't say or the representative. So I don't know if you want, you can change that because you said or representative. But it's right now, it just says the candidate has to be there with the sign.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to say or representative from the campaign.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And so we haven't had a chance to review this because, as I said, I just reached out to him this morning. This is a resolution that he was able to put together. And I think it's important that we spend some time reading and understanding. Of course, I'd be big for us to take a vote on something that we haven't read or understood what we're saying. And at any point, Jessica, if you or Cindy, if you have anything to add, feel free. I did make a, making an edit there. And the fourth paragraph, it says, "Unless candidate is present," I added, "candidate or representative."
And then our address, it looks like there was one zero added. But I know that we didn't have any.
I was ready to just read one. I was worried you were going to find more than that, so.
And obviously, we had talked this morning, too, about we named, we did name the courthouse as a polling location. The exact language is "a special polling location for absentee voting." It's a statement at the bottom of our approved polling locations. And I just want to be certain, I want to be sure that even though it's a polling location, that we're well within our right to limit the signs.
Yeah, because you're not, you're not, first of all, you can't allow electioneering within a certain distance anyway. And you're not eliminating candidates going there and bringing sign. You're just saying you can't stick a sign in the ground and leave there.
Right. That's right. So go ahead, Teresa.
Is this not ordinance seven?
It'd be a resolution.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, you're right. What resolution number would this be then? Seven. I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-07 with the two edits in there, correcting our address and adding a representative of the candidate.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I'm going to open it up for discussion. I know that there's a candidate in the room who I'm sure would love to be recognized. And I'm inclined to do that. I would like to hear from him and understand his position better as well before the vote. And so as chair, I'm going to, I'm going to do that. I, the chair recognizes Damian Stafford. He could just come forward. I'm going to remind you that we do require a level-up decorum. And I'm going to limit you to four minutes for input. And we'll crossfire from there.
First things, look, freedom is not always creating, right? You know, I have a first amendment right just to, because it is a vote center. You can make the language however you want, but it is a vote center. And because it is a vote center, you know, I can go ahead and read that, too, if you'd like. IC Code 3-5-2-49.8. Vote center means polling place, where a voter who resides in the county which the vote, which the vote center is located, may vote without regard to the precinct in which the voter resides. And that was from 2011, when that was put in place. I'm going to go ahead and go with IC Code 36-1-3-11, election sign. Certain sign ordinances are unenforceable. Time period, public safety is the only exception. You guys have not said anything about public safety. It's always been about, we don't want our lawn to look like trash. I'm sorry if my, me campaigning is trashy to you, but I think it's beautiful when I go by somewhere and I see a bunch of signs because that means people are involved, and we should be proud of that. So I do have the right to put my sign up because I was told that it's a political subdivision. Is that correct?
Willie County Government is a political subdivision.
Okay, so a political subdivision. So let me go ahead and read this to you. I'm going to fast forward, it's the same one, same IC code. But it is on the bottom in subsection D. This section does not prohibit a political subdivision from enforcing an ordinance or regulation relating to the number of signs or signs of signs any time if necessary to ensure public safety. That is the only reason why you can enforce it. And nobody has said anything about public safety. It doesn't say that I have to be there with the sign. It says, and you guys made it a vote center. You guys are allowing it to continue to be a vote center. If you don't like that, if you don't like my signs and it looking trashy, you're more than welcome to move it somewhere else. A lot of other counties actually do that. But by law, you guys, you can put your ordinance or your resolution in play, but the only reason you can enforce it is through public safety. And not once has anybody ever said that. So you look into that before you actually sign that paper. Because, look, I, I'm here to maximize our rights. That's why I put my name on the ballot. I fought for those rights, and many people have died for those rights. Maybe some people don't look at them the same way. But if my rights begin and end here, then I'm going to use my rights to begin and end here. Some people don't like that. That's okay. We don't always have to agree. That's okay. It doesn't, it's not personal. But, you know, this is something that I'm very passionate about. And the reason I'm passionate about it is because I live every day with the remembrance of what I had to go through. And I remember every day of those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. That's why I wear my hat, because I never forgot my oath of the listening. So anyway, thank you for giving me a chance.
Yep, thanks for your input. I don't know if we have a response.
Yeah, I can't speak specifically to these code sections without actually looking into it. So, you know, I don't have the answer off the top of my head.
Can I speak to it?
Please.
Okay. I also don't have, Jessica Hockler, voter registration election supervisor. I also don't have those codes memorized. But it is a First Amendment issue. However, according to the Election Division, let me find the right thing here. I knew I wouldn't find it right away. It boils down to a First Amendment issue where the courts have found government can put a time, place, and manner restriction on political speech. And the statute that we talked about that allows you to do that is if you allow them, you can put a time, you can put a place, and you can put a manner, which is what you're doing by making this ordinance. So you're not doing anything wrong in that or breaking anyone's First Amendment rights. The other thing is it's not a vote center. A vote center is a very different thing in law than what he is saying. It's a polling location. It's a special polling location that is only for early voting. Something else that it's going to say, the codes that he was referencing are in regards to subdivisions, basically, and how they cannot put restrictions within a certain amount of time before an election. And that's the reference to that code. So it's not about a political subdivision. It was about a housing addition.
Like HOAs.
Yes, yep. They can restrict it up to a certain point. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
I do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
I think that you can go down or have a hole. That's what, that's why we have, why we retain counsel. I think we're well within our rights for everything we've seen. It's unfortunate that our hand has been forced in this matter, but I feel that this is the needed step that we need to take.
And I'll look at these code sections. As she said, you need to cite a section. I don't know what it's referring to off the top of my head. I'll envision, probably, I mean, I'll do my due diligence and check, but if I find something differently, I'll.
Yeah, I think it's important, too, that we read aloud the resolution. Now, I'm willing to be so. So this is a Willie County Board of Commissioners' resolution establishing a policy of the establishing, I'm sorry, prohibiting signs on public property. Whereas the Board of Commissioners for Willie County, Indiana, are authorized by Indiana Code 36-1421 to permit, prohibit, or regulate the placement of political or election signs or literature on county-owned property, public property, including within county-regulated road right-ofways, provided that the regulation is applied consistently and in non-discriminatory manner. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 3-14-3-16, it is unlawful to engage in electioneering, which includes placing political signs within 50 feet of the polls or chute on Election Day or within 50 feet of the entrance of the clerk's office or a satellite office used for early voting before Election Day. Whereas the county desires to regulate the placement of signage or literature, including political or election signage on county-owned public property, including the county courthouse, because the placement of such signage is likely to have a negative impact on the aesthetics of the property and the orderliness of county business taking place on or in the property. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that county hereby prohibits the posting of political signs or literature on the county-owned property, including the courthouse lawn, unless a candidate or representative is present with and in control of the political or election signage or literature, except that political signage or literature is not allowed at any time within 50 feet of the entrance of the courthouse or one of the clerk's satellite polling locations. Be it further resolved, subject to the 50-feet limitation above, this resolution does not prohibit the placement of political or election signs on Election Day only on the property of the Willie County Government Center located at 220 West Van Buren Street. Be it further resolved that the county is permitted to remove any and all political or election signs or literature posted or placed in violation of this resolution. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage. So again, I do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Having dealt with these kind of signs extensively in my own campaign and helping others, I will note that it is a safety issue, actually. And I'm glad that the candidate brought that up. The wires that are used to hold these signs up, if we, if someone is moving signs or placing them, and they miss one of those wires, and it falls into the grass, and the mower comes along and whips that thick number nine wire out into the street or anywhere, it could strike a person and open the county to significant liability. So it is a safety issue.
Okay. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, saying that passes unanimously. And do you have a copy you can send us to clean up?
Yeah, you hand me your changes there, and I'll make those. You can give me some of your page, and I'll just, maybe keep that little sign, and I'll send a clean one. Okay, got it.
Will you have some facilities requests? So the first one is from the farmer's market, Willie County Farmer's Market. And they're requesting use of the permanent drive to the courthouse, the lawns surrounding roads. They have listed here Restrooms, City Hall, but obviously, that's the city and not the county. And their restrooms are always open. So this is kind of a strange request because it starts before Election Day. And typically, it's my understanding they've waited until after. And so this creates a problem for the pool workers who are showing up on Saturday to pick up their equipment. They're, they'll have to help me with, I think the polling machines are already.
The machines will be delivered, but it's the rest of their stuff.
Yeah, so anything else other than the machines, they'll be pulling into this drive on this day to pick up. And so it's my understanding that you found compromise. We tried to find compromise. We failed, so good on you. We couldn't get to where you got. So are you comfortable with us passing so long as we make note of the compromise that Chauncey Street will be open on the, it'd be the east side of Chauncey will be open to the drive
Yes.
to the west side of the courthouse?
As long as the gazebo and the drive aren't included in that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that would be the compromise, and that's only for May 4th. And aside from that, the request is for the summer. So it will be from May to September, and that shouldn't be any problem for us for the general election.
Right.
And I'll pass this down for you to look as well.
So did Gary Barrett indicate that the city, they would have an officer just making sure at the time that they come to pick them up that they're, yeah. It's on that. Okay, yeah, I see that, the cones, but I don't see that it indicates that an officer's overbooking it just in case, you know.
I have concern because the farmer's market brings out a large crowd, especially for the first few. And there will be a lot of people walking around concerned about their safety. But I think if the city has agreed to provide an officer and provide cones and that sort of thing, then I'm comfortable with it. Initially, they had said, one of the proposals from the mayor's office was to use the alley between the Cluckston and city hall and then bringing cars across. But that, to me, seems like even more of a risk with pedestrians who are shopping at the farmer's market. So this seems as though it minimizes the risk and it will be clearly marked, you know, that cars can enter and exit. So it's been agreed upon by the city and by Jessica. How would we like to move forward?
As long as Jessica's okay with it. I'll make a motion to approve the request is presented. But can we just email the mayor or Gary and just have some, ask if someone, whether officers can be there? Just to make sure, because maybe a vendor would know and they would, you know what I mean, block it or I wouldn't want them to have any trouble.
We've been in contact with the farmer's market and they're, she's, she's making sure everyone knows too.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to approve the facilities request from the Willa County Farmer's Market to include remain for the compromise made in elections in the farmer's market. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same, that is approved. The second is also for May, yeah, from May 4th. And this is later in the day, but it will be the, Club East City Connect is doing the interior history tour courthouse from 11 to 1. And so I think you, were you familiar with this?
Yes.
As well, Jessica. And I know that early voting ends.
At three.
At three o'clock. So the voting will be open. There's just gonna be another, potentially, there could be another group of people walking around.
Yeah, they're going to be instructed to not come into the polling area, but they can look at the rest of the courthouse.
Okay. So I'll also pass this one for your review.
I never usually discuss. And do we know why they picked this particular day? It just.
Oh, we don't, but the courthouse, I think it works nicely because the courthouse will be open and security will be present. So I'm not really sure, aside from the fact that it coincides or it runs along with the museum there. I talked a little bit about it today. They're involved and they're working with, they're working to create a new like tour guide sheet for people. So I think there's several groups that collaborated and they chose this day because the courthouse would be open.
The farmer's market isn't until noon, is that right?
No, that's right.
Just worry there won't be any, there's gonna be 40 participants and just worry there won't be any parking.
I have to do some walking, park somewhere and walk.
Yeah, there's.
I mean, I think it's great. I just wish it weren't every day.
Yeah.
Is what it is.
Yeah.
I move to approve the request from Club East City Connect as presented for the interior history tour on March 20th, May 4th, 2024.
Yep, so I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Right now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that passes. Rob, I know that you had a chance to review some claims last week. I spent a little bit of time reviewing claims this morning that were remainders. I didn't see any issue. I had lots of questions for the auditor, but she provided all the writings her. So I didn't have any issues.
At the same, everything looked. I will move to approve accounts payable.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve accounts payable. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. And then Rob, I believe that you reviewed payroll.
Yeah, I think, uh, standard. So I'll also move to approve payroll.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that passes. Well, I'm talking about facilities requests forms. We recently changed the form. And have you guys had a chance to see the new document, the new form that Andy worked on for facilities requests?
I have seen.
Okay.
The form itself, it has like one sentence in it, but then there's two pages of policies dealing with indemnification language like that for people using these things.
So I, I think that's my fault. I think I have it and I haven't sent it on. But I would like to figure out, well, first, let me send it to you. And then I would like to accept that new format in a meeting coming up soon. So if we put that on your radar so that you can keep it on our radar, Kelly, that'd be great.
Can I add it to your next one?
Yeah, let's do that. And the last item on our agenda today is our previous meeting. This was our March 18th meeting. And so recall, we, that's our first meeting.
Yeah, I'll move to approve our 18-minute sales presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes from the March 18th meeting. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that passes. Andy, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Nope.
Tiffany? Okay, at this time, I'll open up for public comment. If anyone would like to add on to the meeting today. I'll open the floor. I'll, I'll offer three minutes of public comment. Would anyone like to come forward? Okay, Commissioner Basin, do you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Commissioner Schuman?
Nothing.
The only thing that I just remembered is that it is helping out with the name. It's the week of recognition for our dispatchers. And I failed to write that down, but I can't let the meeting end without recognizing our telecommunications professionals who receive 911 calls and dispatch our first responders. We couldn't do it without them. Please let the review reflect. Okay, thanks, everyone, for coming. We'll see you next time at 1:00.
National Public Safety.